It's seven thirty, we'll call this special meeting of the Board of the Fargo Park Board to order. The Board is, got a short agenda today, talking about the Statement of Purpose is the Executive Director Candidate Interview Review. Item number two is approval of the agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Item number four, Purpose of Executive, Discussion of Executive Director Selection and Negotiation Strategy. What I'd like to do for the, for this morning's meeting is kind of break it into a couple of pieces. Like to just start with, you know, what do we want in our Executive Director? Give everybody a chance to kind of reset, go, go around the horn and just, everybody can just have an opportunity to say what it is that you're looking for in Executive Director. And then, after that, we'll go back around the horn a second time and just talk about where you're at individually as a Commissioner, where you think your evaluation is at this point, and then after, everybody has a chance to kind of weigh in as to, you know, what you're thinking, how you're feeling about it, we'll see at that point if there's a motion to hire. If we do, I'd like to separate the compensation package from the motion to hire, so let's focus in on our top candidate, once we identify, and if we can vote that in, then we'll come back and we'll talk about, you know, what the compensation should, the package should look like. So, with that, maybe I'll start at the far right end, Rusty, if you want to talk about what's your expectations of an Executive Director.
Thank you. First of all, may I want to thank the selection committee, and I know you two are on, and Paul is on too. We're in a great position where we have five really good candidates, so I think whatever direction we go, I think the Park District will be in great hands. Just a lot of different things that I see in, in our next Executive Director. To me, I mean, it's basically, the person is the CEO of our system, so there's a lot of things as far as knowledge, professionalism, there's just a lot of things that go with being a CEO. I jotted down a bunch of things, broad-based knowledge of the organization, a leader with vision and strategy, I think that's very important. That person works with the Board, just to plot out the direction that the whole Park System's going to go. Professionalism and representing the community. In the candidates, they were very, I think, experienced on how they handled the media, but I think that's something, as you do more of that, it only gets better. Be able to manage and lead the staff, again, candidates were, I think, had a lot of experience in that. Delegate mentor subordinates. One of them is making tough decisions, too, and I, I mean, I want someone to listen to staff and Commissioners, but i- if there's something that needs to be made as far as a tough decision, this person has to be able to do that. One of the things that's important to me is being nimble and being able to adapt and implement changes in programs. I, I think it's easy to do the same old, same old, but I like to look at Fargo as being a leader and an innovator, and things change fast, and we need to take care of what we're doing today, but yet, being able to be nimble and implement new programs. One thing that I talk about is pickleball, I mean, pickleball is very new, and I'm playing pickleball, and I wouldn't have ever thought five years ago it's something I'd be interested in doing. So, those things come upon us, you know, instantly, and I think just being able to adapt to that and, and changes, as programs and the environment changes. Knowing our budget i- is very important, and we have an internal candidate that should know our budget better than the others, but the other ones too came in and had a pretty general knowledge of the budget, but that's something that they need to be able to lead and be very fiscally responsible. And the last one for me is just having someone that can work with all Commissioners and staff. There's five of us, and sometimes we all agree, and sometimes you kind of agree to disagree, but this person needs to balance that between Commissioners and staff. And that's all I'm asking for. So, like I said, it's a CEO, and it's just, it takes a very unique person, and like I said, I think we have a great group of candidates to select from.
All right. Well, I'll just add on, because a lot of the points that Rusty made are same thing I agree with. I think financial responsibility is very important for me, we have a large system that we've built over time, and we need to make sure we can sustain that moving forward in the future, and build on it to keep up with the trends and what the, what our public expects. Therefore, they need to be able to create new plans from visions and inspire others to keep moving forward that way and, and get people to follow them. They need to work collaboratively, not only with the elected officials and the staff, but also the community and the community user groups, I think that's very important. We need to be customer-focused, which I believe we already are, are, we have a great staff that's already moving us in that direction. Couple of specific things, I want to make sure that they look at the organizational charts, that's something that was changed when our last Executive Director came in, and make sure that we have the positions that we need to move forward, but also make sure that we have the right people in those positions, that the skillsets match. I think technology is huge, we need to keep up with our systems so that they better serve our, our customer base, that they're easy and nimble to use, so that people can find our programs accessible. And I believe that technology can also help make more efficient and proficient use of the staff and techno, and equipment that we have, whether it's computers and/or lawnmowers. And I think we need to keep thinking about the future, take care of what we have, but, you know, what, make sure that we're looking forward, so that in ten years we aren't stagnant and behind the eight ball, so. I'll add that on to Rusty's comments.
Well, and I'll take it next, and I think, and I'm hopeful, that a lot of what we say is going to be repetitive. I, I hope that, and I anticipate that, you know, what you said kind of builds on what Rusty said, but in a lot of ways, it's going to be consistent across the board, and that's, I think that that's, we're all in the, probably going to end up in the same area. The things that I had kind of written down is, first of all, is to be community-minded, whether it's community partnerships, working with our user communities, but somebody that's out there in, in the face of the Park District, but working with, with our, our groups. Staff leadership is huge, I think that we need a new, a leader that's going to provide that leadership to staff, and, and make sure that, kind of building on what Stacy said, that we've got the right people in the right spots. Programming, when I, I wrote down programming, I'm thinking about adaptability and, and trends and seeing what's out there, what's next, and making sure that we're pointed in the right direction as a district. Budget, that's another one that's been repeated, make sure that there's fiscal capability there to manage our, our budget and be prudent with the taxpayer dollars. The next one is, is ongoing operational support, not only does this person have to be able to look at what's out there, where are we going, and what are we going to do new and different, but we also have to take care of our existing facilities and, and make sure that the parking lots are in good shape, and, and so on and so forth. And then lastly, are two more things, one is provide strategic direction for the organization, that goes back to the programming and adaptability. And then finally, we want Fargo to be not only a leader statewide, but regionally and nationally as well. I want Fargo to be recognized as a, as a Park District that everyone aspires to be like.
Thanks, Jerry. All wonderful things that everybody set up to this point, couldn't agree more with, with most of them, I won't repeat a lot of it, but I, I think we have a, a very, very large footprint, right? We, we start up at the North Side Softball Complex, and we're stretching all the way down to the Sports Complex down south of Walmart, and that's a, that's a large swath that we, that we cover throughout the city, and, you know, with the, with the North Side Softball Complex, came an opportunity to turn a lot of, you know, what were natural green space opportunities, as a result of, of softball not being in those places anymore. So, I mean, this person needs to, to be able to obviously work with people, as we said, have strategic vision, but needs to be able to handle everything from, you know, programming to the maintenance and, and all, of all those, of all those lands, but really, to me, the thing that I talked about quite often is, is when I go, when I go out to, you know, other communities for conferences, I try to reach out to their local Park District and find out about, you know, their, their structure, and, which I, which I thought was interesting as we met with each of these candidates, they, some, a lot of them had similarities to ours, but everybody's, to a certain extent, was, was unique, all five candidates' situations were unique. But I, but I think the, you know, one of the most awesome things that we have here that, that I don't see in any other communities is the true relationship, respect between the city, the schools, and, and the parks, and how we work together so well to, to, you know, utilize resources together and not, and not, you know, and not, and just do better things together because we work so well together, and it's very important to all three entities. And so, having somebody who, who understands that relationship and how we can, we can do so much more as a result of that. So, I, I mean, all great things that everybody said, and, and I, I couldn't agree, agree more, I think we're going to find a good candidate.
Well, usually the last kid in the eighth grade says, "Well, they took all my answers."
Right.
But, you know, I have my own list, and I checked them off, I saw Stacy doing the same thing as people went through, and for me, you know, I have a few that I've circled that are more important than others. Professionalism comes to the top, personable comes to the top, approachable comes to the top. When I first decided to run for the Park Board, and I had people nudging me and encouraging me, which is fantastic, but it was, why do I want to do this? You know, I wanted to do it because I feel that I can be a voice for our community and voice for the people that I know, and, and it's continued to be that, where people will say, "Hey, Vicky, what about this?" "Hey, Vicky, can we do this?" I was at one of our rinks the other day, and there's now glass in front of the penalty boxes where there never has before, and I'd like to say that was because the community said, "Hey, this is something we want." And, something we got done. And so, Jerry had mentioned community-minded, and I wrote that down, and it sounds way better than me, what I wrote, I wrote "seeks community input." But, the community is a big piece, are we listening to the community, are we asking the community? If the community comes to us with a crazy idea like years ago would have been pickleball, are we saying, "We're not going to do that," or, "What are you crazy?" Or, "What's that going to cost?" So, the community piece is a really big deal to me. I want a leader who's going to help develop others, especially we have this aging workforce, as we all do, and we've got some very longstanding leaders who have a lot of experience, which is a huge asset for us, but at the same time, in ten, fifteen years, who are those next leaders? Are we, are we developing those leaders? Are we seeing and seeking out those leaders? Are we noticing who in our workforce is going to be the next, the next leaders of the Fargo Park District? Building relationships with potential donors, founding partners, users, any of those things, those, you know, being able to talk with, whether it's the guy on the street, the mom and dad, the little kids, the top dogs in our community. We have a lot of fantastic business people who I think could build great partnerships with us, and we need someone who can get out and work with them. You know, we have high hopes, we have a lot of great things we want to do, and you can't do that without money. And so fundraising is another one that I have on my list of, how can we get to that next level? And, while the Executive Director isn't the one necessarily making all those deals and working all that, they, they are the, going to be the face of the district, and they need to be able to get out there and work with some of those people and talk to some of those people and build those relationships. And then, Jer, Rusty called it tough decisions, I have hard decisions, and that comes in many ways, it's, it's, what's the hard decision for the community, what's the hard decision that you might have to make with your staff? And you need someone who's going to believe in what they're doing and have the conviction behind it to be able to say, "This is the right decision." So, there's kind of my very simple request.
All right.
Sounds as simple as Rusty's.
That's right, book him.
So that kind of sets the table for the next step, and let's, let's talk our candidate evaluations, and I guess we can start over here, similar with how we did the interview, if you want to go first.
Tell me, give me an idea what I'm looking for. I mean, what, are you looking for specific people, are you looking for?
Just an overall of what you saw, where you're at, and how, you know, I, I'm not suggesting that, at this point, that you need to say, "I got, you know, here's my number one," and all the rest are there, but, just kind of a general evaluation of the, of the five candidates.
Well, I was, I was blown away, I, from day one, I was blown away, I, I thought, I, I went into this thinking, "This won't be that hard, I should have asked Paul how hard it was with the first round, he might have been able to tip me off, and I would have thought it was going to be harder," but, you know, I was, I was impressed with the professionalism, I liked some of the ideas, I appreciated the user, the staff input, and, you know, you can use some of that as, as guidelines. I, you know, it was nice when you didn't know who was making which comments, but you could just kind of go down the list describing the people that they met, which would be probably similar to some of the things we would have written down when we met them. You know, for me, it, it came down to a couple of people, there were three that I, there were three after the fir, after we finished, that I thought, okay, which of these three, what do we do with these? What are the, what are their strengths? What are their weaknesses? What am I looking for? And ultimately, I want someone who's going to move us forward, who's going to be professional, who's going to, you know, work with the community. One of our candidates gave numerous ideas on how they would work with the community to get their input, and we've, I think we've struggled with that as a Park District, we're afraid to ask, because we don't necessarily want to know the answer, but we want to ask, but it's, how do you, how do you ask without them saying, I mean, we, we've joked about the four-hundred-person hot tub, or whatever number we're up to now. You know, how do you get that input and be willing to hear that input, and then have to say no sometimes, or want to hear the ideas that we maybe haven't thought of? So, one of the candidates gave, gave that as, you know, just a whole list of things that they would do, which I thought was, were good ideas. I don't know how long you, I, I'm struggling here, Jerry, so.
That's fine, very good. Joe?
Well, first of all, I want to thank the committee for all of their hard work. I agree with Vicky one hundred and fifty percent that this was, this was, this was tough, and it was positively tough, because we had five, you know, very quality candidates that, that came in with different varying experiences and backgrounds, I, I would not say in any way whatsoever. I mean, some stood out to be better fits for us, but only because of who we are and how we are structured, more than, more than anything, size-wise, you know, layout-wise, whatever. But, but regardless, five very quality candidates, and so I appreciate the, the work of the committee, and I appreciate our staff. Diane, that, that was a heck of a schedule, I can't imagine putting that together with airline flights and all that other stuff in a seven-day stretch, I think, and it's sliding a day off for a board meeting in there on Tuesday, so. And so, and, and our staff, I mean, that, those were a lot of days of courting people and showing people around, and so, thank you to everybody for all their hard work and all this, we, in some ways, I guess, had the easier job and it all. But, yes, I mean, that, you know, we, we, we had these interviews, great, great backgrounds, a lot of great information that came out. I'm, I'm with Vicky, and I think probably on the same candidates, and the fact that I had three people that stood out a little bit more for their, you know, experience and ideas for Fargo, as opposed to maybe where they came from. And then got it down more so to two people. And, I, and I, and I, you know, major strengths for each of the two, that were probably different than, than the other persons. One coming from outside of our community, but not, but not, but not too far, and having ties here, and, and great ideas and vision for, and, and experience for how she could, she could do things here in Fargo, and, and had a lot of great ideas, and I really appreciated everything she had to say. And then, our internal candidate, Dave Leaker, obviously has vast experience here, been with us for, for twenty years, and, and, so, at the end of the day, I thought that's, that's where I was at, and, and so, I, I honestly, you know, struggled, but, but I, I felt like personally that, that, you know, that, that experience here and the relationships that we, we got positive feedback from community leaders, at, at not only the local level, but the state level, of support, and, and so, and, and so, yeah, so that's where I'm at at the moment.
Okay.
Save you the trip.
This is why, this is why I didn't touch it.
All right, so my turn. I do too want to thank the search committee for all its hard work. HR sets up an interview process and a hiring process for a reason, and, and frankly, I was in on it from the beginning, we did two rounds of interviews, and I have to say that the first round of interviews versus the second round of interviews changed my scope of, of who these candidates were. I had some coming in after the first interview, I was like, "Gosh, I really want to look at this person." And then we got in, and maybe my mind changed a little bit, because someone else who maybe didn't do so good in the first round suddenly just, you know, skyrocketed in the second round, and, and that, that's exactly what happened, that's typical in a search process, and, so the value of how we do that, I, I think is incredibly important. I really appreciate the participation and, and the desire to provide input, both from the staff and from the community. I talked to a number of community folks that were very appreciative of having that opportunity to meet the candidates and to provide their input. The same from the staff, I think the staff is very interested in what's going on and, and where we're at, because obviously, the, the next Executive Director is going to be their, their new leader in their face of the, the organization. I will say that it's difficult to compare and contrast a known internal quantity, internal candidate versus an external candidate. Does the internal candidate have an advantage or a disadvantage? And I'd say the answer to that is yes, both. Certainly, there, when you have an internal candidate, it's, it's easy for people to identify things, "Oh, he needs to work on this," or, "Oh, you know, we'd like to see something there," but at the same time, I got a lot of good vibes from the internal candidate, a lot, vastly, vastly outweighed, you know, any of the, the few negative comments that, that might have come in. User groups, I've got user groups on both sides of the fence in terms of which candidate they like, so, you know, we talk about making hard decisions, whatever decision we make today, I'm going to have to go back to a user group that is, wants to be very supportive and explain to them that I didn't pick their candidate. So, we've got that as well, so when you talk about hard decisions, we've got one here today. Similar to Joe, I was able to, in my evaluation, drop down to probably, or up to, two finalists in my head, the internal candidate, Dave Leaker, twenty-plus years of experience at the Park District, twenty-six years of overall park experience. Susan Foss, the candidate out of Minneapolis, had eight years of park experience, fourteen years of, of related experience. Dave has been in the Executive Director role for six months, Susan served as an Executive Director for six months. Dave has been Deputy Director for four years, and he was six years the Director at Beulah. Susan was a Deputy Director for a short period of time, and she's been an Assistant Director for about seven years. You go down the list, Dave provided strategic vision and construction of the North Side Softball Complex, and he provided strategic vision for the development of the North Maintenance Shop, to name a couple of things. Susan led community center design projects, and she's managed large-scale construction projects. Dave's budget experience is thirty-two million and a hundred and twenty FTEs here in the Fargo Park District. Susan had an experience of thirteen million budget with eight employees and three hundred part-timers. And then when we take a look at the community scores and the, and the boards, our board scores, we scored Dave a little bit higher as a board in our evaluation, ninety-nine point six versus ninety-five point six. The user panel, we solicited input from them, and, and they scored Dave at a hundred and ten, and, and Susan at, at a hundred and one. So those are all pieces to the decision-making, but ultimately, we've got a hard decision to make, and, and so, that's where I'm at.
Thanks, Jerry.
Well, I'm in a similar boat, there were, first of all, I want to thank President Rostad for organizing this systematic method to getting to this point today. He had help along the way with Diane to keep us in line, which is good, but it was a very objective process. We had a multiple list of candidates that came in, the, the district has a screening method to who followed the rules and gets to the next level, the next level were five of us who sat down and scored out on the same scale and got to five candidates, which was not easy. And I would agree with Commissioner Rostad that, from the video interviews initially to face-to-face interviews after they'd been run through the wringer all day long, meeting our constituents and our staff, and seeing what they could see of our Park District as it's under four feet of snow, it was, it was an interesting process to see how they held up to that. There are three that stand out for me, and one and two are not unlike the ones that have already been mentioned. They both have experience with senior centers, Valley, we have Valley Senior Services, Susan also has experience with that, something to consider. They're both about, passionate about parks, and about making people smile, and doing it in a, in a manner that isn't detrimental to the district, but helps the community grow and recreate the way we want, and what our mission states. They're both members of the national organization and their state organization, they're used to working with elected officials. Dave didn't have to do his homework, because he's been doing it for twenty-plus years here, but Susan did her homework before she came. She had actually toured our facilities and had really worked hard. She's, she's not born in North Dakota, but she is a NDSU grad and is instilled in our community, and so, it, the reason it's such a hard decision is because it's a people decision. It isn't, should we build a new basketball court, and we were off on our feasibility numbers, and after the first year, we were off, we have, and we can make that up again? This is a big decision, because whoever we pick, on paper and in person and through this whole process, there'll be a surprise along the way, and we'll have to manage that, but we have to weigh, outweigh all of the things we know, and with the information that we have, make the best decision, because they will move our district one way or the other, and it could be negative, and it could be positive, it could be both, but it, you know, we have to be able to manage that, and I, I think that's why, it comes down to being the hardest thing ever, hiring is very difficult, hiring and firing, my two least favorite things. So, that's all I have to add on that.
I can be fairly brief, because most of my items have been covered, too. I was impressed with the candidates by the time they got to us, the process was awesome, but it was a very exhaustive day. They started at eight in the morning, met most of our staff, went through the user group interviews, by the time they got to us at three o'clock, I mean, they, they had a pretty healthy day in, but, I, I, again, I think they all did a great job in the interview process. I'm pretty much, I think collectively, we're pretty much all in the same boat, I can narrow it down to two candidates, Susan Foss, from the Minneapolis area, Bloomington, and our own internal candidate, candidate Dave Leaker. And I think for us collectively, I think it's our decision is, is really, which direction do we want to go? I think they all have very good ideas, they all have good experience, maybe one offers a little more change than the other, but we've been through a lot of change too lately, too, and I can see- change too lately too and I can see the side of it where maybe, you know, just getting back to normal and, you know, moving forward that way. So like I said, it's down to two, to, in my mind, Susan Foss and and Dave Laker.
All right, thanks, everyone. So anybody have any other comments they'd like to make or do we want to entertain a motion?
I I just like to piggyback off of what Rusty just said there a little bit at the end that we that we we owe, we owe to our staff that that we we make a the best decision that's for them as a Park District and that we positively move forward into the future today or as soon as as soon as we go. So I appreciate everybody's hard work on this. Appreciate, I mean, the board, the amount of homework that everybody's done, the notes up here, we could have a campfire with the amount of paper that people have printed off to to take notes on. So if any, unless anybody else has something else to say, I'll.
I, yeah, I'd like to add something. So I'm a visual person, so I, as I've told others, that I I needed to lay people out and put them next to each other and and I had a revelation at one point and thought, if I took the names off and I looked at them, I actually thought of this from a movie, The Time to Kill, where he says, now imagine that she's white. And so I I thought, okay, if I did the same thing here and I took the names off and I just took the comments from the from the staff and the user groups and, you know, we're we're concerned about our staff because we know this is going to be change. Either way, whatever we're doing, it's going to be change. And the staff, I was impressed with the comments they made for all of the candidates. They obviously took their time, they were very thoughtful about it. But just some of the things for 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 each of them, the two that we're talking about, you know, we had set the bar very high, personable, knowledgeable, top runner for the position, prepared, well-spoken, very approachable, great communication skills, very good job interacting with staff, approachable, knowledgeable, poised, very professional, well-researched. And it goes on and on, I mean, there's pages here, obviously. Somebody was impressed with how many names this person remembered and and all the things and that they knew where the RDJ was, which was impressive for the staff and I, you know, there's pages and pages. And then in the negative side, it was a question about her current job and how short she's been there. And then just starting her position and then there were a couple of comments about her about operations experience. Then we go to the other, the other one we're talking about with with the internal and it's knowledgeable, cares about the operations department, easy to approach, experienced, comfortable, commitment and knowledge, my top pick, you know, and that goes, and again, you can go pages after page. So you've got positives for both, you've got, you know, and again, we know more about the internal and so the staff has more to say on both sides for the internal, but there were staff who picked who picked internal and there were staff who picked external. And, you know, I wonder if they had both been here for twenty years, which one we'd pick, or if neither one would have been here at all, which one we'd pick? And I look at, you know, the interviews, to me, one of them had a much stronger interview than the other. One of them wanted to change things, one of them said, everything's great, we should leave it as it is. And so that's a factor for me. I look at their, I looked at their references and the descriptions on the ref on the references, one of them's more vague than the others. Been around the Parks and Rec Field for a long time. The other one, you get exceptional in all areas, best supervisor of staff I've ever seen, forward-thinking. So for me, I, you know, if you take the name off and you look at it, that made a difference for me and that I just, I think we have a great opportunity here and I think we can't take this, I think we have to really think about, yes, will, if we go external, will there be a, will it be a challenge? Will it be, you know, will some of the staff struggle? Probably, but will it happen the other way too? Probably. I mean, there's going to be, there's going to be staff on, there's staff on both sides of the fence, there's community on both sides of the fence, Jerry said that. And I want to make sure we're making the right choice, not just the easy choice.
I'm not sure the right procedure and I I just don't want this to be a race to make a motion because I think collectively, when we decide the right candidate, we're all going to be on board and support them. So I mean, I I don't want it to be where we make a motion and then you feel compelled to vote along because you don't want to be the one saying we don't support this person. So I I don't know how it's going to work or I don't have any better way to do it, but I think either way, the two candidates we're talking about, I think I can speak for all of us, I think we support either one. And if someone has a different way to do it, I'd like to hear it.
I would agree with you, Rusty. You know, I'd I'd like it to be that we all are on the same page and we all agree and I don't know how we do that. Unfortunately, we got a lot of eyes looking at us, so it's uncomfortable, but but it'd be nice not to jump into a motion and just bing bang boom. It'd be nice to have a further conversation about, you know, either either bring me along or get me on the same page or me vice versa and and I don't know how you do that, but.
Do you think you need more clarification from the candidates? Do we have follow-up that way? Is there, is it something we can determine internally or?
I don't think more time, I I just think I don't know if there's just a way for us to just collectively just have some more conversations, see exactly where we are and maybe it's like Vicki did, you know, items one way or the other or I just, we can't go wrong, but I I still, you know, the amount of time we took doing this, I don't want to rush to judgment and rush into a motion right away unless we feel we're ready to do that.
I I don't, I don't, you know, I I gave some thought to this and I I said to myself, what what would happen if I woke up on Monday morning and had to go to NDSU and walk in the door and start the interview process all over again for my job? And every single person that I came into contact with on Monday at work was taking evaluations of me and and thinking what they want me or whatever and then and then had to go through a very public process of of deciding whether or not I, A, was the right person for the job, but B, then hearing or seeing the feedback of of whether or not I was a perfect fit for the job. And I'm not going to be a perfect fit for the job. There's there's, you know, and and this job has even wider, vast thing. I mean, you know, as the as we move through that process, those those things are going to become more and more and I think those those things will come along, but but, you know, when we when we interviewed, we we started with with at the beginning and ironically, the two candidates we're speaking about right now, one happened to be on the front end and one happened to be on on the back end. And, you know, we we knew the the internal candidate, we knew that person and we asked questions more sometimes more specifically because you you know that person and and you, you know, you and you're wondering about certain aspects that you know intimately and specifically about that person because we've worked with them forever and has been our interim director for the last six months. But and so you're you're right, Rusty, we we, you know, can't go wrong either way, but but I know, but I know that Dave is ready to become the next executive director and I know that he's going to to do a great job and I know that he's that he will lead us into the future and I and I believe that in my heart and and, you know, under different circumstances, if it had been a totally external search, would, could she have been an easy choice? Absolutely, but but I'm, my, but my heart and my gut tells me that that Dave's ready and that that he's the next executive director for us.
So I'll go back to my earlier comment about the internal versus an external candidate and and I don't know if by removing the names really does anything for me because, again, as as Joe said, we asked, we got specific questions and answers with with Dave and you just don't have that opportunity with your external candidates. You you end up with a kind of an apples and oranges comparison because, you know, I have, we had one day with Susan Foss and, you know, I'm sure if you went and talked to her staff and asked her to be evaluated as if she was applying for the position that she's in or if she wanted, was applying for the executive director position, the 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 staff and the community that works with her would have different, probably a different criterion evaluation. I'm just assuming as much because, like Joe said, when when you've when you've had somebody around and you know them, you can identify strengths and weaknesses. I guess where I come down on it is, I spent almost all day yesterday on the phone talking to staff. I called everybody and just said, hey, where are you at? What's your thoughts? And more than, it it was like very few people at all wanted to go outside of our internal candidate. It was so miniscule that, you know, I I respect the people that want to have a change, but everybody that I talked to resolutely, and how can I go against that? How can I go against staff that are telling me, here's the guy we need to have to hire? You know, and and so, yeah, I can say, well, I'm going to take a risk, it's going to be a hard decision and you're not going to like it, but we're going there. But I I can't look people in the eye and the staff and and a majority of the community partners that have all said, stay with Dave Laker. And then and I'll just finish, one of the inputs that that stuck out, that I think is is very tangible to the conversation, and I'll just read it, this came from one of the staff inputs. He said, I thought long and hard about about this and I thought back to when the Admiral from the Navy came to address our group some time ago. He said some very profound things that have always stuck with me. He mentioned to a group of us after the presentation that there is extreme value and advantage to dealing with a known set of circumstances. So he's applying that to this position and he's he's telling me we need to go with Dave Laker.
Well, my process was to go back and read the job description and pick out the qualities that best suited the expectations that we all basically agreed to. There were, I didn't, I added very little to my main list of what we all talked about and, I mean, we could flip a coin, we could hire them both, that was one of my ideas. They both have the qualifications and the experience to do the job. And it is, it's a blessing and a curse that we we know Dave and we don't know Susan. And so we can read things in, we have past experiences, as does the staff. I think the same thing for the two applicants coming in. She's selling herself, she she knows that we don't know and we and she's going to let us know everything and Dave assumes we all know and he's selling us on making the park system the best one between Seattle and Minneapolis or bringing it back to the way it was. And so there's a, it feels, it felt kind of stodgy, but after doing some homework and talking to staff myself, I sat down, created my own little grid because I like spreadsheets and scored it all out and they come, they come in, one, two, and I I agree, I think Dave is the the guy for the job today. But it is a difficult decision because she has very quality, she brings an urban feel to a city that's on the verge of trying to be urban. We keep growing, we keep, new things keep happening, we have a very diverse population even though the numbers don't necessarily show it, of interests and, you know, it's a tough, it's a tough, this is where I sit.
Any other comments or I don't know how we not rush to a motion, but at some point I it's, we need to.
No, that's helpful, just to give more content behind, you know, what people were thinking. Vic, do you want anything to say, anything else?
No, I'm good.
All right, well, I'll make a motion to make Dave Laker our number one candidate. Is that the extent of what we need to do at this point?
You have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and second. Any more discussion?
I I think one thing, and I don't know if this comes up now or during negotiation, we have a policy that we're all aware of, it was talked about in the interview, and I think it's worthy to talk about it now in discussion, is our next candidate needs to live in Fargo. And they have, upon hire, they have six months to reside in Fargo. I'm assuming we're going to stick with that policy and that's part of the the process and I really don't even want it to be a negotiation. When you read the policy, it's clear, it's six months and what the the consequences are for not living in Fargo. I think we'd be doing a disservice to candidates that applied, candidates that didn't apply because they were aware of the policy. So just wondering where we are as a board on the policy as it sits today.
I agree, they they must reside in Fargo and follow the policy.
I'm there too. I I think that policy is there and if, you know, we have a whole laundry list of policies out there and if our chief executive officer is not able to comply with policy, how do we enforce any policies to staff? So I think that that's very important.
Agreed.
So that would, so that would be, that would be brought up during the offer, I'm assuming?
That said, I will be, I would be willing to negotiate, you know, an extension if that comes up in the negotiations. Everyone that I talked to yesterday and and some of the potential candidates who didn't apply because they don't live in the city, I asked them about that and and they were willing to say, you know what, if you negotiate something beyond six months, that's reasonable, they were willing to entertain that.
But what's reasonable, now 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 we're we're kind of messing around with the policy.
I don't, I don't think we have the ability to do that. I think this is the policy, we've all just stated, it's important to follow the policy. I don't think we have the ability to negotiate that policy. I think it's the po, a policy, we can negotiate the other terms of the agreement, but I, you know, in fairness to people who didn't apply, in fairness, in fairness to people, we have no idea if they looked at this and said, well, it clearly states I'd have to and I can't. It could have been brought up ahead of time, we actually looked at this policy before we posted it. I don't think this is a negotiable item. I think there's other things we can negotiate, but I I don't think we want to mess with the policy.
And I think part of it too, Dave, I mean, he's had six, seven months as the interim. So you apply for the position, you have to know it's part of the position. So in my mind, he's had an extra six or seven months thinking that if this happens, what do I need to do to plan for it?
Okay, so positively moving forward, that will, then he will definitely comply with it and it just says even more his dedication to the Fargo Park District that he's willing to sell his house and move to Fargo in order to be our next executive director.
Any further discussion? Jeff, pull the board.
Commissioner Papacek?
Aye.
Commissioner Greggs?
Aye.
Commissioner Deutsch?
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson?
Aye.
Commissioner Rosted?
Yes. Dave Laker is identified as our number one candidate. So we'll move on to compensation, the compensation package, obviously, the whole HR, you know, leave, sick leave, insurance, he's all, he knows all of that.
Can you go through that? That's real exciting stuff. No.
Start at the top.
Don needs to hear some of that.
I'd have to get my notes.
So the one, the one couple of things that we need to think about is is salary. I did do some research, we knew what the salary of at least a couple of our candidates going in and obviously with Dave as the internal, he's currently at one forty-seven, eight sixty. And when we did elevate him to the interim executive director position, we gave him an extra a thousand dollars a month as.
we gave him an extra $1,000 a month as compensation for taking on the additional duties. So, that's, that's exact, that's where he's at currently from a salary perspective. He did share with me some of the, or he shared with us, the, the salary ranges of, based on the salary survey that's going on, counterparts in the state. Bismarck is at 143 and change. Grand Forks and West Fargo are at 125 and, and change. And Sioux Falls, it's on the salary survey, is at 163. Our mid-range is like 140 or 150. I can't remember the exact number, I don't have it in front of me.
152 and change.
152 and change. So, that's kind of the, where we're at from a pay scale perspective. Discussion or conversation or motion?
What is his current salary?
147, 860.
That's before the, what we're paying him?
That's included.
To sit in as the interim. Or does that include?
That's his current. So, that includes the, the $1,000 a month.
So, it was 135, 860 as the deputy.
That is correct. And that's adding the extra 12,000 onto his deputy base salary.
That's before Diane's time. So, if she's telling us the current, we can do that.
But that's what the scale is.
So, the salary as the deputy director was 135, 860. What we're paying him to be the interim is 147, 860. And I don't know how this gets negotiated as far as advancement or increasing it over time. But, you know, I'm a, I'm a believer in rewarding positive results. And I don't know if that's something that goes into that package or offering of, you know, pick a number and say, you know, figure out some set results and here's what it would be in year two or year three. And I don't know if that's necessarily how we can do things, but I like that idea. I obviously don't want to go backwards from where he is now. There'd be no sense in doing that. So, that's kind of where I'm at.
Well, I, I think too, it's important to measure and not wait a year to measure. So, hire him and I would say in six months or whatever the time period is, have another evaluation. And I don't mind at that point then having a chance to increase the salary. You know, if, if you're performing and you're meeting that expectation. So, you know, I, I would throw out, you know, if he's at 147 right now, and it's basically, you know, just shy of the, the mid-range is that the salary would be 150,000. And I know the other candidate, I know she was, I think, about 140, 1,000. So, I think it's a fair starting point. It's a little bit more than where we started our last executive director, but it's also been three, four years ago. So, I think we start there, have provisions in six months. You know, these are the expectations, you meet those. And if there's, you know, a chance for an increase, you know, I don't mind seeing that. And the same way, I, I like incentivizing people for doing a good job and not just giving people money because they, they've been here for a period of time. So, there'll be a lot of extra demands. It'll be a new job for Dave and I think he can perform. And I think let's just set the standards, what we think and, and measure it again and make him successful.
So, start at 150, create a matrix of expectations for a six-month eval at, and determine whether or not there's a room for an increase at that time. I'm in favor of that.
Works for me.
Okay, so, is that a motion?
I'll make a motion, just what I said. No. Motion to have the salary be 150,000 at six months. We'll do a, a review process. And I think as commissioners, that's something that we'll come up with as far as what the standards are. I don't know if I should say what percentage increase or, you know, I don't want that really to be negotiable either. And I don't know, I mean, that's something that we really didn't talk about. But I think as we get through, we can work on that.
Do we have a second?
Second.
So, just a discussion, thinking in calendar terms, six months from now is, depends upon how it's sliced, June or July. June is the election. We could have new board members on, turning over the president to Stacy. So, we've got a lot of moving parts there right at the same time. Do we, do we want to get this done before the election, after the election? I think we need to think about that in terms of, you know, stability and having, you know, the right people in the right spots to do this. And, and whether we know Stacy's going to do it in July, I'm fine with that. Or if I do it in June, that's fine too. But it's, I think we need to think about that from a timing perspective.
Well, I think we could, I think we can do it before then. I mean, heck, you know, I mentioned a year. Rusty went with six months, which was a better idea. So, you know, three, four months in, why not do a good evaluation then and say, "Okay..." Because my, my thought is, we're going to set out expectations. Because, you know, he's been in the role, he's been around for a long time. But now that he's the guy, here are the expectations of the job, you know? And it's been, it's been several years since, since our, the leader he probably emulated. And what are we, you know, what is he, what do we expect of him? What does the staff expect of him? What does the community expect of him? And I think you can evaluate, evaluate it to some extent in a few months. So, it does make probably sense rather than waiting for the bump in the road. I mean, if the five of us are evaluating...
Well, and if we set the matrix of evaluate, per evaluation at a 90-day mark, it sets the future plan, basically, at that point, for a six-month.
So, and then going forward, we have a good timeframe every year going forward.
I just wanted to kind of work through the logistics of it. And that, you know, there could be two new board members. So, we probably should get this done before the election. And I guess the, we'd probably finalize it the night of the election. So, that makes, that's good sense. Makes good sense. All right, so we have the motion and we have the second. Any further discussion? Jeff, pull the board.
Commissioner Papacek?
Aye.
Commissioner Griggs?
Aye.
Commissioner Deutsch?
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson?
Aye.
Commissioner Rosted?
Yes, the motion passes. I'm getting back to my agenda. Item number five, adjourn.
Still moved.
Second.
Meeting adjourned.